Ready to go?
We're good.
All are back.
There we go.
All right.
AARP in Cincinnati.
Shouldn't Bruce do like some intro?
Here.
No, no, no. He has to put his hand.
Some intro music?
Yes, put his hand over his ear and go. Here's Jimmy.
There we go.
We're live right now.
Well, we're on, yeah, waiting on Patrick.
Are we on right now?
Yeah.
Do we need them?
No.
Nope, we don't.
Call it back to order.
Okay. You ready? Are we gonna call this speedy back to order? Those that are here.
Okay, welcome to the Queen Anne's County Commissioners Meeting. This is a public meeting that is being aired live on our local cable television station, QAT-TV seven. These media broadcasts provide county citizens an opportunity to watch and review our scheduled public sessions. In addition to our live audience this evening, we are providing remote options for citizens to watch and participate in county commissioner meetings. Citizens may watch our meeting live on our website at qac.org/live or on our public access government television channel provided by Breeze Line Cable Services. Citizens may also participate by joining the live Zoom meeting by going to qac.org-publiccomment. Citizens may also email comments to publiccomment@qac.org. All comments received will be summarized during the press and public comment period on tonight's agenda. We acknowledge everyone's participation and by attending you acknowledge that this session is both recorded and aired. Press and public comment will be taken and is limited to three minutes per person. If you do care to speak, please sign up at the information table in our lobby. Comments longer than three minutes can be submitted in writing for the commissioners' review. We will now stand and be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by President Commissioner Jim Moran.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everybody. That brings us to the approval of this evening's agenda and our minutes. So, the agenda for today's meeting, July 23rd, along with the regular session minutes, the closed session minutes, and the roads board minutes from July the 9th, they've all been circulated for review. Do we have any additions or corrections? I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion to second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So moved.
All right, and I'll make a motion to amend the minutes on page 12. There was a motion for reconsideration on CRR-05 Chester Haven Beach Partnership LLP. It's recorded as four yes and one no. It should be, Commissioner McLaughlin should be recorded as abstained.
Second.
We have a motion to second, any discussion? Sorry for the clerical error. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So moved.
All right, and a motion to accept the minutes as amended and all other minutes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
All right, thank you, commissioners. Okay, so we just held a closed session under the general provisions article, section 3305b1, to discuss personnel and boards and commissions, and also section 3305b3 to discuss land acquisition. So I think we have a couple of board appointments to announce. First, we had social services.
I move to appoint Eric Call to get the call. To fill the vacancy on the Social Services Advisory Board. This term will expire on June 30th, 2027. I had to.
Second.
I'm gonna get a fly swatter. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
All right, thank you, commissioners. And then we have the Bay Bridge Reconstruction Advisory Group, otherwise known as the BRAG.
I move to reappoint Commissioner Moran to the Bay Bridge Readvisory Construction Group, Advisory Group.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
All right, thank you, commissioners. And then we had one last item, the renewal of the engagement letter for government relation services with Mr. Bruce Bariano.
I move to reappoint Bruce Bariano as our government representative.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
All right, thank you, commissioners. So I believe that brings us to press and public comment.
We have nobody that's signed up, correct? All righty.
All right, Bruce?
All right, our first email comes from Nancy Fisher about the Route 50-301 pilot program. Dear Commissioners, thank you for encouraging ideas from residents of Ken Island. Here is one that you may not have considered. Why not activate an emergency dock system near both fire departments on Ken Island? A speedboat could take emergency victims to a hospital located near hospitals such as Anarundal Medical, up the Severn River to Williams Creek, or up to Johns Hopkins Bayside. There seems to be docks on the Ken Island coast that could be reinstalled and reactivated. And then our second email comes from Sam Fayan. We live in Stevensville but need to travel west frequently. The ramp closure is tremendously inconvenient for us. Please end it as soon as possible. Thank you. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Would anybody like to speak? Seeing nobody, we'll go ahead and close press and public comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Moran. Okay, we can go to presentations next. So commissioners, if you want to turn to tab number six, pages one through six, item aye. We also have a presentation up on the screen, and I'm happy to announce we have Mr. Donald King, Renee Shealy, Dan O'Connor, all from Delmarva Power. So folks, if you want to come on up. Mr. King is a senior engineer. Ms. Shealy is the senior external affairs specialist, and Dan O'Connor is the manager of design engineering for Delmarva Power. So he's in the back here.
He's hiding.
He's hiding. All right, moral support. All right, so please take it away.
All right, good evening, gentlemen. We were asked to come here and give you an update on the current Delmarva Power projects. I believe we did it last year sometime in April. So this is just kind of an update of where we're at right now and going on for the past year. If you look at the presentation there, I believe we had a little bit of an update on this last time. That is our, the picture shown currently on the screen is the Narrows Substation. I believe you, on Route 18, you've seen it. This is to support continued growth and load in the area mainly towards the Stevensville area and also to replace our, to take load off our Graysonville sub down there across from Fish.
What did you say? I remember when you did it, when you were here before, and the question was asked, what about that Graysonville station? Is that gonna stay operative or?
There's currently some discussions around that, whether to just leave it as a standby station or leave operative with load serving on it, yes.
I think that was the answer you gave us last year.
Yes, yes.
Pass the test, good job. I just wanted to make sure.
So just a little bit of description of what's going on here. We're gonna have five underground circuits coming out of the substation. Currently, the substation is in service energized, there's no load on it currently. We're gonna be working on those five distribution circuits sometime in the coming year. They're gonna be serving Dominion Road, Gibson's Grant, Four Seasons, Narrows, and the Graysonville area. Next slide. Oh, okay. The other substation we have going on is the Queenstown Substation. That is on Greenspring Road, just around the curve there. Those circuits are gonna come out, four circuits are gonna come out, serve Queenstown, Benetpoint Road, and the Duell and Clark area. And these circuits are just going to split out and take, this one in Narrows, are just gonna split out and take load off the, our existing circuits and reduce the customer council on those circuits.
I like the trees you put around Greenspring.
Yes, there's a significant amount of trees, yes. Narrows does a decent amount also. Another project that we have going on, this is part of the county up there in the Crumpton, Millington area. We are reconducting there along Route 544, replacing deteriorated poles and upgrading reconductor with heavier wire, while some additional switching in the area to move load around.
So that's some of the major key projects as far as infrastructure and major investment that's notable. I wanted to just take a minute and point out that we do have a good amount of other resources or residents and customers when it comes to our website in itself. Just a reminder, customers can check out their My Account, take a look at what their usages are. You can report any type of outage, you can track an outage on it in real time to see what the restoration is on our website if you want to know that. Even streetlight outage reporting is available on the website, you know, and various rebates, anything that's coming up. We always encourage people to constantly check the website, you know, for resources that, for businesses or for residents. And then we do have a new online portal that's being developed right now for any new business, utility requests, streamlining a lot of that. So certainly a lot of effort is going towards technology and ability to sort of give the customers real-time information and access as they need it. I wanted to mention, the next slide would be some of the community partnerships for Queen Anne County. We have a fairly significant grant program that nonprofits can apply to us online for events and various agencies. Everything from the Chambers, United Way, events, festivals, that type of thing. One of the significant nonprofits that we have partnered with at a sort of a signature level is Junior Achievement of the Eastern Shore. They used to be on the Lower Shore, they've come to the Midshore, and now including Kent and Queen Anne. So for instance, there is a kind of a mock student center in Salisbury, Maryland, where middle school and high school kids can go in, they get assigned to a storefront, a job for the day, they have a real-life simulation of getting a paycheck, they literally have a bank debit card that they use, they have iPads within the storefront. So if you are in the hospital storefront, you have jobs with that. If you're in our Delmarva Power Utility storefront, you have utility jobs, CEO, lineman, that type of thing. I'm mentioning that because a lot of us, if you don't have children interacting with it, you may not know that that's going on. We've invested over $75,000 just for that storefront space in Salisbury, and over 10,000 students from the Eastern Shore are gonna go through that every single year. The other program that Queen Anne County students have engaged in that we are supporting is JA Inspire. It's middle school kids that are doing kind of a big job fair down at the Civic Center, Wycomico Civic Center. They get bussed in, and there's probably 100 different vendors from across the shore where these students can participate. And again, Delmarva Power is a significant partner in those that are benefiting our communities. The other notable partnership we have within Delmarva Powers, there's a lot of employee giving and fundraising that's done, even in our Centerville office here, whether or not it's for Special Olympics or other types of, you know, food banks and so forth. And Exelon and Delmarva Power has a program that if you volunteer with any nonprofit, you can donate, your hours will equivalent, will be equivalent to dollars, and you can donate that to any other nonprofit. So you can volunteer for an animal shelter and then give your dollars to your little league of your choice. And so as employees, the company encourages volunteering, giving back in the community, and will match dollars for the hours served in any volunteer service. So it's just something notable as a community partner that we're proud of, that we do in the community. And then finally, just the contact screen is really just a reminder of, Donald King is the engineer here in Centerville. I'm external affairs, government affairs for the Bay region. I know I've interacted with Todd and others when it comes to tornadoes and storms over the years, or who do we call when something, that's a one-off situation? That would be myself, and you also have Donald here too, so. And then lastly, LED streetlights. We have been converting a lot of the streetlights throughout the county and throughout the Eastern Shore from high-pressure sodium to LED streetlights. And so we go and work with each town to say, you know, what lights do you want this year converted? We'll give them an allowance of a certain amount of lights for free, and we work through. Majority of the towns at this point have either been completed or near completion at this point for LED lighting.
Oh.
Any questions?
So I've got a question. It seems like every development I go into, all your power lines are buried, but anywhere you see transmission lines, they're above. I mean, and I'm sure that's on purpose, and it's for ease of maintenance, or what's, why one versus the other?
Mainly cost-wise, once you get into the higher transmission levels, there's a significant amount of cost associated with the insulation on the cable and whatnot. That's mainly the main reason. It would be, it would be a cost to the shareholders, to PGM and whatnot.
To bury those?
To bury them, to bury.
So the next question's gonna be Route 18, between the Narrows and Dominion Road.
Yes.
You've got transmission lines on both sides of the road.
Yes.
We've been trying to get that road upgraded with the turn lanes, with shoulders. We can't do it because of those power lines.
Correct.
And we've been told many times that it's millions and millions of dollars to move those power lines. I mean, I guess, one, and I guess you can only speculate to this, but why did they do it like that? Why did they put them on both sides and pinch the road in such a manner that it can't be expanded? And two, why can't we put them all on one side or the other? And I was told that, well, if you put it on one side or the other, it's an incident, and you lose it, and you lose everything. And I said, well, if something can take those poles down, we've got bigger problems than...
Didn't something take them down?
It took them down.
Yeah, the tornado.
The tornado took them down.
They have the new ones in there, right?
Right, right.
No, some of the metal ones came down.
The metal ones, the metal ones bent as well. Yeah.
Once they were stuck in the mud, yeah. And then when they went out there to fix it, they drilled right through a sewer line, right Alan? So I mean, is there anything?
I think for the transmission lines on that section, it, so obviously, we would have to get easements agreements right of ways wherever we put our lines. I, I don't have the history on those lines. I know the steel line, I believe, was put in in 2008, and I know our transmission engineer had a pretty difficult time snaking through and getting the necessary easements. He probably got them from the state, they're probably on state property. The wooden line, I can't speak to the older wooden line, so if we can't, I would say in that section, if we couldn't get the easements to extend farther out from the road...
I mean, has the state been in contact? Is it, I mean, they're looking at, you know, the Route 18 corridor.
The state hasn't contacted us. I believe all of our, it's only been the county that's contacted us, and we've known it's been something that everybody's been looking to do for a while, just, you know.
We'll keep looking for a while, in a while. Maybe when the bridge gets done, we'll get the power moved, I don't know.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
My question, quick question. Of your footprint that you cover, your region, what do you project in the next five years for extended power for AI? Is it something that your company's thought about?
To support...
To support artificial intelligence and the demand capacity that it's gonna, I'm talking about for your footprint, not Queen Anne's County.
For the entire Delmarva Power footprint?
Yeah.
You're talking regionally.
For your company.
Yeah.
I, we have a department, our capacity plan department looks at those, at the low growths. I'm not, I'm not as, I don't have as much information on those conversations, I'm dealing mostly with the local level, but there has, we have had discussions and we're well aware of the demand that AI and data centers would put on our company.
We do have a new economic development department that actually has been sort of launched and expanded, and we recently have a new person dedicated to the Bay region, Delmarva Power, Delaware and the Bay region. And in fact, I spoke to him this week regarding a proposed data center. And so there's definitely some collaboration to understand what those trends are. We also have the University of Maryland Medical Center in Easton that's gonna be expanding, and so I'm on that project team between Easton Utilities and the hospital.
So you're gonna need more power.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, we have to collaborate, obviously, Top Tank, Easton, you know, Utilities, it's probably one of the things we do well, is trying to be creative with understanding that the service territory sort of looks very interesting at times, what we cover and what other people cover, but yeah, it's working together with what that infrastructure will be needed.
It's good to be forward-thinking.
Certainly helps.
Yes.
We don't have the crystal ball, but it certainly helps.
You can see it coming, though.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Real quick question, you mentioned the regional hospital, so what are you planning for down there? Because I think there's a groundbreaking coming up next month for the new regional hospital in Easton, so are you involved with that as well?
So Easton Utilities will be servicing it, but we are on the project team because certainly there's a lot of infrastructure support when it comes to the transmission, the reliability, the technical aspect of feeders and all those types of things, and what that's going to require. You know, I think it's, I may get it wrong, but 500-plus thousand square feet, and it's, you know, it's gonna be a large center, and to the economic development piece, besides the hospital center, there'll be growth potentially with other auxiliary-type services and businesses and medical practices and so forth that will probably build out, you know, from that. So certainly something that we're all looking at, even though it's technically in Easton Utilities' footprint, we work together to understand what they may need for support from us.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we have, while we're on presentations, we have one more presentations, a presentation, it's from Character Counts, our Character Counts Spotlight. We have Melinda Ray. Melinda's here, so she wants to come on up and...
Hi, guys.
How you doing?
I was prepared to read, I saw at 6:30.
Yeah, no, we're a little ahead of schedule here today.
I'm another guy here then, I just left in.
Yeah.
Hello.
How are you all?
Good, how are you?
You're doing great.
So just a quick update on where we're at with Character Counts. We are in the summer, so obviously, we don't have any volunteers in the classrooms, so we're in the process of prepping for the coming school year already. As always, I encourage the public to reach out to me if they want to volunteer. It's less than an hour a month, it's awesome, you make such a difference, and the students really look forward to their Character Counts coaches coming in. So I also want to make a plea to the businesses, because summer is when I can really focus on our business of character aspect, so any business in Queen Anne's County is welcome to join us and partner with us as a business of character. And I love that because I get to do shout-outs on our social media and really promote the good that a lot of our local businesses are doing. So any business, please feel free to reach out to me, volunteers, reach out to me, m-r-a-y at qac.org, or through our website, www.peopleofcharacter.org. I did want to share with you, at the end of the school year, I like to kind of see what the tempo is for Character Counts in the schools. So I surveyed our teachers, I surveyed our coaches, and this year, for the first time, we actually surveyed third through fifth grade students to kind of see what their feelings were about...
Third and fifth, or third, fourth, okay.
Third, fourth, and fifth grade, I should have just said that. So coaches, obviously, they love it and are invested. One question that I asked all three of those groups on each survey was whether or not they felt that the Character Counts lessons were having an impact on behavior in the classrooms. Our coaches said 100%, absolutely, we're making a difference, which is great, because I think that they are too. But more special than that to me was that our teachers, 95% of them, said, yes, it is making a difference in the behavior in my classrooms, which was awesome. But even better than that, those third through fourth and fifth grade students, which we're talking like eight through 11-year-olds at this point, 70% of them said that they thought the Character Counts lessons were making a difference. And that age group, to get that kind of buy-in, I think is really kind of special, so I wanted to share that with you as well.
Those are impressive percentages.
That's good.
Yeah.
Yep. Ready? All right, so we have the Queen Anne's County Commissioners' Character Counts Spotlight for July of 2024. Citizenship is the pillar Character Counts celebrates in July. Being a good citizen of your community includes being respectful of the community's needs and stepping up when needed to support your neighbors. One way county citizens can do that is serve as an election judge. One of the most important roles we, the people, have in guiding our country is the power to vote for our representatives. An election judge plays a very important role in electoral process by administering voting procedures in an assigned precinct or early voting center and ensuring a fair and accessible election for all eligible voters. It can be a long day, but can also be a rewarding experience. In addition to financial compensation, these judges sleep well knowing they played a role in shaping of our country and helped our voters exercise their rights to vote. Character Counts wants to thank these individuals and recognize them tonight. You can find out how to become an election judge by visiting the county website or find the link in the Character Counts Spotlight page on the Character Counts website, peopleofcharacter.org. Character Counts would love to hear from you about who should be recognized in future spotlights. If you're aware of a business, nonprofit, or individual in the county exemplifying one or all of the six pillars of character, be sure to nominate them. How's that going? Are you finding you have a file filled with folks that are submitting stuff for you and that you don't?
I do, not as much as I would like.
Okay.
Because I think that, I hope that people are familiar with the fact that we do the spotlight. It's been a year, this month is the 13th one that we have done. And so I would love to get more nominations from the public, especially about individuals that are doing things. I'm in a lot of places, I'm in a lot of schools, but I'm not everywhere. So I need them to help me identify. And I thought it was timely, obviously, this being the election year, to honor the election judges. I have served as an election judge, it is a long day, but it is very rewarding, and you learn so much about the process through doing that. So I would encourage all of our citizens, kind of like jury duty. It's one of those things where it's a long day, but you learn so much about citizenship, and which is our pillar this month, and so I thought it was a very worthwhile experience. So I would encourage people to look into that.
You have a list of your coaches for next year that has already said they're coming back, is it?
I do, and so we had well over 100 coaches last year, which was fantastic. It was the largest number of coaches we've had in quite a while, and over 70% of them have told me they are coming back, so, yeah.
Yeah, that makes it easier.
It does, although we still, I'm always looking for coaches, so anybody, please call me, it's such a cool thing to do. I also get to coach myself, which is really nice, being a former teacher, it's nice to get back in front of a group of kids every now and then, so I always look forward to coaching, so I always give myself a classroom or two, too.
Bring us their name next time, and we'll give them a shout-out.
Absolutely.
Throw a hundred people in a couple of minutes.
So I'll throw a shout-out for Character Counts. They have a great Facebook page that you can go to, find some more information out about how you can become a Character Counts coach in our schools, and I speak from experience. I did it for fifth graders and I did it for freshmen when they were at the annex. Completely different outlook on the six pillars and how they're applied, but nonetheless, there was a great deal of satisfaction that comes with volunteering to do it. And it's like you said, it's just one hour.
Yeah, we, our coaches typically are assigned to a single classroom, they stay with that class the entire school year, so you really get to know your students. And they work out the schedule with the teacher so that it works for both the volunteer and the classroom schedule, so it's not like I'm gonna tell you when you need to be there. And typically, it's twice a month, half an hour at a time, so it's less than an hour a month. It's really, really cool.
And it is, it's certainly satisfying.
It is, it is, we are in all eight elementary schools and have been in all the elementary schools for several years, but this coming school year, we will be in all four middle schools. So that's very exciting. We were in two of them last year, and then this year, we're gonna add the other two, so we'll be in all four.
Are you in high school, the two high schools?
Working on that. So we partner with some of the high school students. Ken Island High School's National Honor Society has a Character Counts committee, and that we have student coaches from their pool of students. So we are partnering with Ken Island High School, I would love to partner more with Queen Anne's County High School. Baby stepping, I've only been in this position for a year, but we're rolling, so it's very exciting.
Well done. Very well, yes, thank you.
Awesome, thanks, guys.
Thanks, all right, thank you. All right, commissioners, we can move into our legislative agenda for this evening. First up, we have Ms. Donna Landis-Smith and Mr. Joe Pippen. We have a public hearing scheduled for agricultural preservation easement applications for this year. And we have 11 applications. And Ms. Donna Landis-Smith will be conducting the hearing on behalf of the county. So Donna, take it away, please.
Actually, Joe's going to take this.
Uh oh, okay.
First time.
Passing the torch.
I am.
Yeah, so as we all know, we're here tonight for, to put a notice of hearing for these mouth applications on record. Donna says I got to read this word by word. So let me get through this and then we'll answer any questions afterwards. So we have notice of hearing pursuant of agricultural article section 2-504 noted code of Maryland. The county commissioner of Queen Anne's County will hold a public hearing today in July 23rd, 2026 PM in their office, 107 North Liberty Street, Central Maryland. The hearing is held to receive public comments on the establishment of agricultural preservation easement applications on the land owned by the following petitioners. David L. and Clara B. Bramble, 6th Election District, Tax Map 62, Parcel 53. They have 8.49 acres. Moving on, Howard Michael Dean, 6th Election District, Tax Map 54, Parcel 11, 282.08 acres. Hammer Family Farm LLC, 3rd Election District, Tax Map 29, Parcel 26, 215.355 acres. Knight Farms LLC, 2nd Election District, Tax Map 10, Parcel 44, 155.61 acres. William M. Knight Jr., 7th Election District, Tax Map 11, Parcel 53, 190.12 acres. William Knight Trustee, 2nd Election District, Tax Map 16, Parcel 9, 89.025 acres. James D. and Gina Schillinger, 3rd Election District, Tax Map 44, Parcel 45, 97.17 acres. James D. and Gina L. Schillinger, 3rd Election District, Tax Map 52, Parcel 91, 134.7 acres. James D. and Gina Schillinger, 3rd Election District, Tax Map 53, Parcel 36, 229.437 acres. A. Wilson Walls Farm LLC, 1st Election District, Tax Map 13, Parcel 19, 157.636 acres. Lastly, William Victor Wood Trustee and J. Lawrence Wood III Trustee, 6th Election District, Tax Map 61, Parcel 39, and Tax Map 62, Parcel 3, 311.212 acres. The Queen Anne's County Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board has given a favorable recommendations to the county commissioners in submission of the agricultural preservation easement applications. Direct any comments or questions regarding agricultural preservation to Donna K. Landis-Smith at Queen Anne's County Soil Conservation Office, 211 East Water Street, Central Maryland, 21617, phone number 443-988-4178. All hearing sites are accessible to individuals with disabilities, sign language interpreters, and assistive listening systems will be available for individuals with hearing impairments. Please contact Human Resources at 410-758-4406 or TDD 410-758-2126, seven days before the hearing date if the above is needed for the meeting. Posted by Queen Anne's County Board of County Commissioners, Stephanie Gerald, executive assistant to the county commissioners. This was all posted on July 12th, 2024, and July 19th, 2024, both from the Bay Times and Record Observer. Open for questions.
Have any of these folks had been paid to put any other land in preservation?
Yes.
These are all first timers?
These are all first timers. They have never applied on these particular farms. So there's 11 new ones, but we actually submitted 16 applications for funding, but the other five had been in prior to and have had public hearings before this one. So these are brand new properties.
Have we had any recent applications from people with property on Ken Island?
No.
And did not apply?
No.
Long time, I think.
It's been a very long time. We do have surprisingly quite a few farms zoned Ken Island that are in preservation, but not recently.
Right, the reason I say we had the press release later earlier today about land preservation in Queen Anne's County, not just for mouth, but for all the other different programs.
Correct.
Showed on Ken Island and comments from some people that do more on Ken Island. If you have land on Ken Island that you would like to preserve, we're more than happy to have you put it into preservation.
Absolutely.
Even if you have a single family house, you can actually put it into preservation. And when you die, that house can be raised. I mean, there are things that you can do. If you live on Ken Island and you want to preserve land, and you can also buy land on Ken Island and you can donate that to be preserved, but it takes the landowner. We don't force preservation of land.
Yes, it's a voluntary program. And as you said, there are other things that you can do. And if they're looking for tax benefits, not necessarily the income, we can facilitate that donated easement.
Right.
You know, and that's, that's, that's a very large benefit for tax pressure.
If anybody's interested in preservation land on Ken Island, reach out and we'll get the information on what you can do to help that.
We will guide them in the right direction.
Any other questions, comments? Keep up the great work. Do we have to call the public?
Yes, you have to make a motion for these.
I move to approve the 11 new mouth properties for easement applications to be submitted to Mouth Board of Trustees for approval and appraisal.
Second. Do you have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those with favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? So moved.
So the total for the 16 applications that we submitted is 2,572 acres. Now, on that note, these are being submitted for the fiscal year '25 and '26 funding. The state Mouth Board of Trustees voted to combine two fiscal years of funding because of the low budget. So we will not be taking any applications in 2025 at all. So these particular properties, the 16, will be appraised in the fall of '25 and the offers will not be made until?
'26.
'26. So we're actually skipping a year. And the reason that the state Mouth Board of Trustees chose to do that is for two reasons. Number one, because of the lack of funding. If we were to do a single year cycle, the state initial allocation will only be about $500,000 and we're not going to do much with that. So they have a projected '26 budget, so they chose to put the '25 and '26 budget, which we would start out with about 1.4 million instead of 500,000. This year, we started out with 1.7 million. So that kind of shows you the trend where we're at. So we're kind of, we're kind of hitting a lull as far as the funding, but this will give us an opportunity, just kind of projecting what appraisal values are and what asking prices are, we could probably get four or five farms in with that 1.4 budget and then the state match. However, you have progressively and consistently pledged 1.3 million dollars of county money coming from the ag transfer tax, the solar fees, personal property tax, and the remainder came from the general fund. You can still do that for fiscal year '25 and commit that 1.3 million, 1,333,333. And then Joe will come back to you in January of '26 and ask you for an additional 1.3 million. We only, go ahead.
However, you don't get to match from the state.
The state match will only match that 1.3 million.
They're only going to match you for that one easement cycle.
Correct. But you could put in 2.6 million dollars of county money, the $2 million from the state for the matching funds, plus the 1.4 million of our initial allocation. That would probably get you about eight farms. So it's something to contemplate. We just kind of wanted to put that in front of you because you have been very consistent and very, you know, attentive to the fact that, you know, we have the ag transfer tax, we have the solar personal property tax, and we all don't know what '26 budget's going to look like. So you, as the commissioners, may want to like kind of put that in the back of your mind because we're going to come to you in January, even though we're not taking applications in '25 and ask you to commit that money. We've, we've made tremendous strides. As Chris had mentioned, the press release came out today about the preservation that we've done and what we've been able to accomplish. And I think this is something that not only Ken Island needs to acknowledge, but the rest of the county. There is a federal goal that was put out by Joe Biden, President Joe Biden, and it also was put out to all the governors of every state. It's '20, '30 and '20, '40, 30, 40. So by '20, '30, they want 30% of the agricultural land in the United States to be preserved by the year '20, '30. And 40% of the agricultural land is preserved by '20, '40. As of these easements that we got funded last year, we had 10 farms funded, 10. So we were able to get in 1,254 acres. We are now at 43% of our county agricultural land. We're 16 years ahead of schedule. We've already met our '20, '40 goal 16 years ahead of schedule. I think that's pretty impressive for this county. And I went online and I did a search. When all the other counties, like Carroll County's in front of us as far as mouth easements, there is no one even close to us as far as our total preserved lands in the entire state.
Percentage wise?
Yes. Or acres.
Or, well, acres, right.
Or acres. Frederick County, Carroll County, no one is even remotely close to what we've preserved in this county. And I think that's something that you all, as a board, need to be super proud of yourselves for putting that money and committing yourselves to land preservation. Now, that's all, all types of preservation, Maryland Environmental Trust, Rural Legacy, Mouth, non-condiguous development, open space, everything. We literally are at over 90,000 acres. And our comprehensive plan says that we have 100,000 acre goal. We're less than 10,000 acres away from that. I think that's something that's, at this county, when you all go to Mako, you need to brag about that. That's a big deal. That's a huge deal.
I've been waiting to be able to go after Carroll County.
Right?
Just been waiting.
On the, on the overall scale, we've surpassed.
Oh, we're looking big picture, we're not going to.
Oh, yes, we have to look at the whole picture, it's not just mouth.
Absolutely.
And to touch on last year's easements, I said we got 10 farms and we got 1,254 acres. That's $4,991,000 we got. And today was our monthly mouth meeting, second round offers. Coming next week, the state has $32 million to make second round offers.
Really?
And we are looking really good. So we have eight farms that weren't funded. Joe and I were kind of looking at the appraisal rates and we're averaging 60% less than the appraised value. I really, really think we're going to get all eight farms.
Awesome. 60% less?
60% less than the appraised value on these properties. That's what they're willing to take. If we get the other eight properties, that's 1,409 acres, which is 200 acres more than what we just got, for 6 million bucks. That's a lot. So we put the 5 million, then this 6.
We should just play for the second round. We always do better in the second round. I think we should just forego the first round.
Well, it's just dependent on, it just really is dependent on what the landowners want. And the, and land values have gone up.
Yeah.
So, so if we put the Rural Legacy in that we got this year, which is the DNR program, our first round offers, if we get all of them, the second round offers, we're going to be at $13.3 million this year. So for your, so.
On, on 1.3 million dollar investment.
Correct.
2026, they're not taking any applications, but.
2025.
2025, we're making up for it this year.
Yeah.
Basically, if you look at the money and the acreage, I mean, it's basically three years and one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no doubt.
You're talking, if we get the other eight farms in, that'll be 23 farms that we've preserved this year for 13 million bucks.
Since we got Joe involved, things have been shaping up.
What's that?
I know, right?
Things have been shaping up, all slackened.
Yes, I know, I'm sorry.
Actually, I just, I was actually going to say something somewhere, make a comment similar to that, that I think you're, you're starting, we had some concerns when you were first introduced to us, that were you going to have that, that attack mode that Donna has and that attitude to being number one in land preservation? I think you have done well in being her student.
Maybe not, oh, I picked up a few things. Maybe not quite as boisterous as Ms. Smith here.
Certainly word.
Certainly more outspoken than you were when you were first introduced to us. So we appreciate your efforts.
Yeah, well, and I can say, you know, he's, he's in on all my conversations with the director of Mouth. He's in on all the emails that, you know, and correspondence and so forth. And I can tell you, the landowners that we're meeting with are super comfortable. They know that there's a, and every, there's, this is a very, very private thing that they do. And we can't talk about what they ask for, how much they're getting until it's recorded in the land records. So there is a lot of privacy that we deal with. And there's a lot of things that we can't tell you all until we get it officially from Mouth. So there is, there is a level of trust with landowners and I, he's already gained that. And I see that already with landowners coming in and talking to him and having those conversations. So it's, it's been, it's a great transition.
You're feeling comfortable about it.
15 months and I'm done. I told that to Todd today, 15 months, I'm done. But I have no qualms or reservations at all handing the torch over. And he's going to take this program and grow it even more, absolutely. And I think we have a really, really big mountain to climb this year if we get these other eight farms in. Trying to do 23 easements and getting the title work done, the surveys done, dealing with the attorney general's office, it's a lot of legal work, a lot. But he's taken the reins, he's gone out to farms and taking pictures and coordinating stuff and this is, this is going to be a big year for us. Big year.
Any way to throw in another 1.3 mill right now and see if we get another 12 mill?
Well, we, if we get all eight farms this year, we're good.
Okay.
We'll have, we'll have them all funded, yeah. So the 1.3 million, you need to keep that thought for '26.
So that's what I'm saying, but can't, why can't we do an internal through Mouth if we say we're putting our share up and we don't care about your money, just get these farms in preservation? Why can't we do that?
That will happen. I mean, you can, you can actually send a letter to Mouth in January and say, even though we're looking at the fiscal year '25, '26, we're committing this as part of our fiscal year '25 and '26 funds, and then we're going to send you more. So you can certainly do that. I mean, I don't know how it works internally with fiscal, but with Mouth, we call it obligated, unpaid but committed. So that's how we kind of look at it. I mean, that's, we have seven farms that still need to settle for Rural Legacy, but we have the money secured. The money is not going anywhere. We just need to get them to the finish line. So.
More to come.
We would appreciate the fact if that's something that, you know, you all could discuss at some point in time. We will be coming to you in January, even though we're not taking applications in '25 about securing that funding for '25. And we'll get a report from the finance office, how much ag transfer tax we have, how much solar fees, and how much would make up, we would need to make up the difference for the 1.3 million.
Okay, sounds good.
Any other questions?
All good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you too.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
All right, Commissioners, we're a little behind schedule, but we have the next ISO legislative business. We have is a public hearing on county ordinance 24-12, discharge of water softener backwash brine. That's item number two in your book under tab seven, pages 37 and 38. We have Mr. Patrick Thompson here who will chair the hearing. Mr. Thompson?
Ready?
We're ready.
At the regular meeting on June 25th, 2024, Commissioner Wilson entered county ordinance 24-12, the bill entitled, Announce Concerning Discharge of Water Softener Backwash Brine. For purposes prohibiting the discharge of water softener brine into septic tank fluid pumping step public sewer system, provided monetary fees for violation and generally addressing the dealing with the discharge of water softener brine issue within the system. By adding to section 24-149 of the Code of Public Local Laws of Queen Anne's County. Public hearing being held Tuesday, July 23rd, 6:15 PM in the county commissioner's meeting room, Liberty Building, 17 North Liberty Street, Central Maryland. Cops of county ordinance have been available to county commissioners. Cops of the Police Ordinance have been available at the County Commissioner's Office. Word Department of Crime and Examining during normal business hours and online at the county website. Period will be limited to three minutes each. Written testimony of any length will be submitted on the hearing date through the County Commissioner. All owners of accessible individuals with disabilities, sign high responders and assistive assistance available. Part of the record proceeding will be a certificate publication indicating that notice of air with published form. Two weeks prior to tonight's hearing, the record will be paid out through the paper in the general place. I don't think anybody signed up. Is anybody here? Alan, you have anyone?
Alan, has me got a question for you. So what would they do if you got your, where would the pipes are discharged to? Just outside?
And so you talked about, that's the normal thing they do. I mean, they might, environment help may require them to do a little sewage pit to collect it. I mean, if you pipe it that size, it's going to kill your grass. That's a given. So.
Right.
It will or won't, Bill?
Yeah. It's funny, because mine goes into my sump pit.
How many people put it into a sump pump, put it out to the ditch?
Because of the French drain with the water coming in.
Yeah.
It's a drain. It eludes it. It really does. And it goes down the grass. It doesn't do anything. Actually, I haven't had any problems.
That, that would be my solution if I had a sump pump.
Very good.
This is step one of step two. If you approve the ordinance, then we have to come back and amend the rate schedule to add the fee that he referenced. But the theory is, once we found a problem, and their guess is, at this point, it might be 5% of the houses down there, maybe 10%. If we have a problem, we would notify the people. We would give them like five months to hire plumber to correct it. If they didn't, then this penalty fee will kick in.
Five to 10% that are, that are still pumping it into the step?
I think, no, I think there's probably 50 to 75% that are pumping it into the step. But it's only very inefficient ones or household, large households that produce a lot of brine. I think most of the houses down there have some type of something.
So does that mean some of them can continue to do it?
Yeah, we're only going to, we're only going to implement this if it causes us a problem.
Okay.
How do you determine if they're causing the problem? What's the?
I'm sorry?
How do you determine which ones are the problem?
We'll get a service call.
I mean, is it the amount of brine? Is it, is it a percentage? Is it, is it?
The amount of brine.
So how do you know how much brine's in, in the tank?
We don't. All we know is it's causing a problem.
But I guess I thought.
It varies based on the hardness you set your softener at, too. If you set it higher, you're going to get more brine on the backwash than you would if you, if you have it set at a lower setting. So.
If you have a large family, you're going to use more water.
Do you get a call for the step system needing service and that's what you determine?
Or service call. We've had service calls where the pumps have been completely clogged because the solids are getting through the baffle.
Gotcha.
Oh, the solids and the brine.
Brine, let me read this for you because it says a better than I do. This is from Orico. They told us it might be an issue and, and it is, but it's not as bad as they thought. Brine has been reported as the primary cause of premature drain field clogging. When you add salt to water, it increases in specific gravity. This increases its buoyancy and inhibits solids settling and stratification within the septic tank. The brine is heavier than the water, quickly occupies the sludge zone, which is at the bottom of the tank. So basically, it won't settle out. It just pushes.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And their tanks, the baffles are about this big and it's like two thirds up from the tank. And it's supposed to be clear water going through there. Those pumps can't pump solids. That doesn't really concern me as much as sooner later to the collection veins we're going to get clogged with solids. They are not designed to have a scour velocity to move solids. So then you got a serious problem. But again, I don't think it's widespread, but where it's a problem, it's a bit of a problem.
So Phil, you got it? The, the stuff that's in the tank actually floats, don't you float when you hit the beach?
Mm-hmm.
Phil. Alrighty.
Wow.
Yeah.
Alan, is there a target on, is there a target on that from that jacket?
There is.
There is. As we all know. Okay. Well, anybody else? Anybody want to speak? Seeing none, we're going to, we're going to close the, the hearing, the comment period. Do we want to wait or you want to make a motion?
You can wait two weeks. That's all.
Wait two weeks.
Okay. We would open for two weeks then. Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. Crimby.
All right. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, if you want to turn to tab three, we have two action items this evening. Round out the meeting tonight. First, we have an under tab three, item one. We have a memorandum from Stephen Palmer. This is a capital request for a large transit vehicle. Community Services is recommending the approval to purchase a Ford Transit bus for a total of $119,340. Of that amount, $91,033 is grant funded through Maryland Department of Transportation and $28,307 will be funded locally. This is based on a purchase price from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of General Services pre-established government contract. And the vehicle will replace bus 340 of 2007, exceeding the state's useful life cycle. So, and I do understand that this bus is available for delivery relatively soon. So Director Willis is here if you have any questions.
I move to purchase one Ford Transit bus using the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of General Services contract, number C Charlie T Tango R Robert 005759 for the approved purchase of $119,340, in which Queen Anne's County will pay $28,307.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? See, the, the, the big plus is that it's readily available. That's, that's going to be, I mean, that's a rarity. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. There we go.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Item number two, continuation of our broadband services installation. This is item two, pages 12 through 14. If you recall that we advertised, put an RFI out for middle mile fiber built to accommodate some areas where the long driveway grant program couldn't directly connect. We did get a grant of 1.1 million from the state for use on that project. We received two responses, one from Chop Tank Fiber and one from Talkie Communications. We had 10 areas that were identified for a price quote. There is a map in your book. Chop Tank provided a price for two of those areas, a cost of $821,520 with a county contribution of $400,000. And Talkie Communication provided a response for all 10 areas at a cost of $1,524,103 with a contribution from the county of $762,077. And that is a 50-50 cost share. And obviously, Talkie Communications provided the, the best bid, equates to about $15,000 per household. And we do have available funding for the match available in the broadband public fiber project. Sorry.
Jack, do you want to do this?
Oh, good. Yes.
I move to approve the request to move forward with Talkie to build the 10 middle mile fiber areas for a total cost of $1,524,153 with a contribution of county funds in the amount of $762,077, where the long driveway grant program will supplement a build to 105 homes. Talkie will fund the remaining 50% of the project.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. We will continue with our broadband provisions to our county citizens. We're getting closer.
Chipping away at it.
Didn't I just see that the governor approved the few million dollars more for the broadband? Like in the last day or two?
He did a clean energy one for 130 million. I don't know that that had any broadband in it.
I don't know. I didn't see that. But I'll, I'll check on that. Yeah. Okay. Well, Commissioners, that is all the action items we had for this evening. Do we have any more pressing felt to comment? I believe we did get an email comment in. All right. Bruce?
Commissioners, this comes from Jay Falstad. Dear Commissioners, I'm sorry that I was unable to make tonight's Commissioner meeting. I wanted to extend a hearty congratulations on today's news that over 90,000 acres in our beautiful county has been permanently preserved. This is truly a notable achievement that over 40% of the county's farms, fields, and forests have been permanently protected and that the county is 15 years ahead of schedule and preservation goal of 40% by 2040. For 55 years, Queen Anne's County Conservation Association has supported keeping Queen Anne's County the rural gem that it is. Our small towns and country roads, fields that literally have amber waves of grain are the epitome of what defines America. We applaud both the landowners and the local and state government agencies who are committed to protecting these valuable resources for the future. As you know, with over 10 million people just across the Bay Bridge and another 6 million people to the north and east, Queen Anne's County faces constant pressure to develop. It's a never-ending struggle. The Commissioner's commitment to protecting our county's agricultural and natural resources places Queen Anne's County as the preservation leader on the eastern shore. QACA would like to acknowledge the exceptional work of Donna Landis-Smith over these many years. Ms. Smith has done amazing work in maximizing limited funding resources and preserving as much land as possible. Well done, Donna. Commissioners, with 43% of land preserved and with a long list of landowners who want to enroll in either Rural Legacy or the MAF program, we look forward to celebrating the 50% goal as soon as possible. Congratulations on all of the job. Very well done. Sincerely and respectfully, Jay Falstad.
Very well. Would anybody else like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close press and public comment.
Let me just mention two Commissioners. We have Director Riley here of Information Technology and Communications. And he was here just in case there were any questions on the broadband action item this evening. But I wanted to commend him and his team here tonight because, as you know, we had some, some area-wide outages with our computer systems and we were largely unaffected. And I think those guys, he and his team were at it from very early in the morning that day. And we had very, very, almost no problems here with our infrastructure from an IT standpoint. So we were pleased with that. So, yeah, yeah, very pleased with that.
You called CrowdStrike and told them to get their act together?
I'll say what, because I, personally, I didn't realize how large of a footprint CrowdStrike had globally.
Scary. Scary.
It's a monopoly.
How reliant we are on.
Public utility monopoly.
A, a close friend of mine was, had a Delta plane ticket to fly back and coming from Wisconsin to Atlanta in the back of the BWI. And it was funny because online, if you went out to the Delta website, it showed everything is, is, is fine. They even received a text from Delta saying, giving you three steps. The first step was, don't change your ticket. So they ended up canceling the flight and Southwest apparently doesn't use CrowdStrike and they were able to get a direct flight to BWI. But out of all the different, you know, the main airlines, it's just, it's crazy.
It's a nightmare.
Southwest, hospitals.
Works them every time.
Couldn't do surgery if someone, and they have bought five years in the business. It just killed it. I was in Florida trying to get a plane. So it was, it was uncomfortable.
I remember that Delta Air's, his song was over in Finland, I think, and was someone screaming, trying to get back.
Yeah.
That was just.
I could stand to get stuck in Finland. I don't think I'd have a problem with that. All right. Just saying.
Roundtable. You're up. You're, you're good? Patrick, anything?
Glad to be here.
Awesome. You leave? Nothing?
4H is coming up, so everybody make sure that you put it on your calendar. Starts on the 11th, right? If I remember correctly, it was?
12th, I think.
You mean the, you mean the fair?
County Fair.
County Fair.
Yes, Monday, the 12th.
Monday, the 12th. So people make sure you get out there. A lot of great new improvements to the 4H park. So go out and enjoy it and enjoy something that what Queen Anne's County is all about.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There we go.
He didn't even let you try to speak.